All of them, Bernard Thompson? Alderman Kathy Burkin?
Yes.
Alderman Zenen Duda?
Yes.
Alderman the 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 hacker?
Yes.
Approval agenda?
Make a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Second.
Motion made, second, all favor.
Alright.
Consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made, second, all favor.
Alright.
Any votes? Public hearing, Jim Holland. He around?
I haven't heard from him.
Mr. I'll let him know also that he was on there. So with that being said, Mr. James Holland's not here, dude Beck Mary's here, would you guys be?
He's out here.
Oh, there he is. I sent Brad. Mr. James Holland, it's in time. You got the floor, sir.
Oh, I have to go, whatever.
No, no, Mr. Holland, Mr. Holland.
You have the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's in time. You have the floor to talk.
What do you want to talk about?
Yeah, I want to lease, what is it, an acre? A right out of acre?
A bio.
Yeah, some bio property over at the end of Seventh Street.
Yeah. Back there by, around the curve on Wythe Drive.
That were.
Back there by where Lee's, is that Maya?
Yeah.
On the other side of the curve?
Yeah, on the back side of it, back there along Wythe Drive. You go past the sewer plant.
Oh.
Down that road. Get that herd.
Yeah, yeah. It starts to look like.
What are you going to be using that property for?
I have three trailers that I use for my wood cutting. I have three trucks that I use and it's kind of looking like a junkyard around my house over here. And I just kind of wanted to straighten everything up and kind of get stuff out of sight, out of mind. Think it'd look a lot better.
How how far larger the lot is the lot?
How large does it?
I don't remember how big a lot is.
Yeah, but what it's at least.
I think it was 60, 70.
It's an acre right out of here.
How many, so are you proposing, you wanted to lease it and then you wanted to, are you intending on maintaining it as well?
Yes.
Well, he has to say he has to maintain it.
Yeah, all the rules that apply, all the rules that apply to these houses.
Insurance on it.
I had to comply with and I've already gave approved for my insurance.
Yeah, he does have proof of insurance.
Well, I would suggest that, I don't really anticipate any problem with that. I'd like the board an opportunity to have the opportunity to discuss it amongst ourselves and then respond. Is that a week?
Okay.
Is that work you're doing?
Yeah, that works for me. Like I say, I just wanted your things cleaned up and straightened up, out of sight, out of mind and, yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, it's a dollar, release it correctly. Okay. Alright.
Right.
Anything else for you?
No, nothing I can think of.
Alright, sir.
Alright.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Alright, we'll be in touch.
Thanks.
See you.
Alright. Mary's here and it's up to you, Paul, if you want to add her and amend that part of public, um, the way they're doing presentation.
Absolutely.
She do likes it better.
My computer is spinning, so if you guys have other business to do while I get this ready, that's more.
Just give us a heads up when you're ready.
Yeah. Does it work?
No.
Sometimes.
I finished business, now I'm new business.
Building.
Building to amend the budget for the city of St. Mary's area for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Should be in the package.
So regarding the numbers, unless, do we have, do we have them already?
That's my, that's Mary's.
Oh, okay. Why do I remember the case?
Yes, the budget is in your pocket.
Is it attached to this particular ordinance or is it separate?
It's.
This one would be a separate.
A separate ordinance.
Is it?
Not, yeah. Oh, it's, I gave you a copy of the ordinance.
Oh, okay, it has the remount budget within. So this is the one that deals primarily with the sewer department to remove the sludge, right?
Yes. It's been over budgeted, so I have to amend it to.
Is this higher or lower than?
It's higher.
We might have to amend it.
Oh, it was like 40,000 dollars.
Is that because of what we spent to have the sludge removed and going forward, I would assume that we're not going to have the same, the same amount of expense?
Yeah, we should, we should. Man, we put, I budgeted, in the budget.
Based off preceding year?
For.
And then going forward, if we, presumably we're going to have a lesser expenditure on this, so this will just have a surplus, if you will, that we can apply to those other areas if we need to. Alright. Do they have a motion on this?
I think seven point.
We could.
Yeah, so I'd make a motion to proceed with the adoption of the orders after reading through it.
Heading only.
I'm not sure if anything else there.
Alright.
But just for the purpose of the city and documentation, look, I would suggest that, I'll just read it really fast and then when we vote on it, we'll do the heading.
We'll leave it by, if I were to vote on it, yes.
Okay, so bill number 1002, ordinance amending the budget for the city of St. Mary, Missouri for the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 be ordained by the order of alderman of the city of St. Mary, Missouri's follows. Section one, that the budget for the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 of the city of St. Mary is hereby amended as follows, due to the removal of sludge and other unexpected expenses with grinders. The sewer department budget is $143,367.61. Section two, all ordinances in conflict are amended to reflect this change. And section three, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its passage of approval passed and approved this ninth day of October 2024. So that's about it and so on.
Bill number 1002, an ordinance amending the budget for the city of St. Mary, Missouri for the fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Yes, second motion.
Make a motion for adopt bill number 1002, heading only.
Never read heading only, sorry.
Make a motion for adopt bill number 1002, heading only.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, roll call.
I have to leave it in. Uh, second reading, bill number 1002, an ordinance amending the budget for the city of St. Mary, Missouri for the fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Yes, second motion.
To adopt.
Never read heading only, sorry.
Make a motion for adopt bill number 1002, heading only. Make a motion for adopt bill number 1002, heading only.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, roll call.
I have to leave it in. Uh, second reading, bill number 1002, an ordinance amending the budget for the city of St. Mary, Missouri for the fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Yes, second motion.
I second it.
Motion made, second. All favor. Any votes?
Bill number 1003, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2024 and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, roll call.
I have to leave it in.
Alright.
Uh, second reading, bill number 1002, an ordinance amending the budget for the city of St. Mary, Missouri for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Um, Alderman the hacker?
Yes.
Alderman Zenen Duda?
Yes.
Alderman Kathy Burkin?
Yes.
Alderman Bernard Thompson? Absolutely.
Got the motion.
So for the public, just to review this one more time, this is for the fiscal year 23 to 2024 and it's based on our expenditures for removal of sludge, which was at a critical level and needed to be done. And going forward, it will be used for the signature.
And we get budgeted in from now on.
Yep.
Alright. Bill number 1003, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2024 and appropriating funds pursuant thereto. Do I have a motion to adopt by heading only?
Make a motion to adopt by heading only.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, roll call.
Bill number 1003, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2024 and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Do we have a second reading?
I second it.
Motion made, second.
Bill number 1003, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2024 and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Do we have a second reading?
I second it.
Motion made, second.
Bill number 1003, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2024 and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Do we have a second reading?
I second it.
Motion made, second, roll call.
Bill number 1003, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2024 and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Do we have a second reading?
I second it.
Motion made, second.
Bill number 1003, an ordinance amending the budget for the city of St. Mary, Missouri for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Yes, it's been over budgeted, so I have to amend it to.
Is this higher or lower than?
It's higher.
We might have to amend it.
Oh, it was like 40,000 dollars.
Is that because of what we spent to have the sludge removed and going forward, I would assume that we're not going to have the same, the same amount of expense?
Yeah, we should, we should. Man, we put, I budgeted, in the budget.
Based off preceding year?
For.
And then going forward, if we, presumably we're going to have a lesser expenditure on this, so this will just have a surplus, if you will, that we can apply to those other areas if we need to. Alright. Do they have a motion on this?
On the law line.
I think seven point.
We could.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'd make a motion to proceed with the adoption of the orders after reading through it.
Heading only.
I'm not sure if anything else there.
Alright.
But just for the purpose of the city and documentation, look, I would suggest that, I'll just read it really fast and then when we vote on it, we'll do the heading.
We'll leave it by, if I were to vote on it, yes.
Okay, so bill number 1002, an ordinance amending the budget for the city of St. Mary, Missouri for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Do we have a second reading?
I second it.
Not sure if anything else there.
Alright.
But just for the purpose of the city and documentation, look, I would suggest that, I'll just read it really fast and then when we vote on it, we'll do the heading.
We'll leave it by, if I were to vote on it, yes.
Okay, so bill number 1002, an ordinance amending the budget for the city of St. Mary, Missouri for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Be ordained by the order of alderman of the city of St. Mary, Missouri's follows. Section one, that the budget for the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 of the city of St. Mary is hereby amended as follows, due to the removal of sludge and other unexpected expenses with grinders. The sewer department budget is $143,367.61. Section two, all ordinances in conflict are amended to reflect this change. And section three, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its passage of approval passed and approved this ninth day of October 2024. So that's about it and so on.
Bill number 1002, an ordinance amending the budget for the city of St. Mary, Missouri for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Do we have a second?
Make a motion for adopt bill number 1002, heading only.
Never read heading only, sorry.
Make a motion for adopt bill number 1002, heading only.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, roll call.
I have to leave it in. Uh, second reading, bill number 1002, an ordinance amending the budget for the city of St. Mary, Missouri for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Um, Alderman the hacker?
Yes.
Alderman Zenen Duda?
Yes.
Alderman Kathy Burkin?
Yes.
Alderman Bernard Thompson?
Got the motion.
So for the public, just to review this one more time, this is for the fiscal year 23 to 2024 and it's based on our expenditures for removal of sludge, which was at a critical level and needed to be done. And going forward, it will be used for the signature.
And we get budgeted in from now on.
Yep.
Alright. Bill number 1003, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2024 and appropriating funds pursuant thereto. Do I have a motion to adopt by heading only?
Make a motion to adopt by heading only.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Motion made, second, roll call.
Bill number 1003, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2024 and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Do we have a second reading?
I second it.
Motion made, second.
Bill number 1003, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2024 and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Do we have a second reading?
I second it.
Bill number 1003, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2024 and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, roll call.
I have to leave it in. Uh, second reading, bill number 1002, an ordinance amending the budget for the city of St. Mary, Missouri for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. Um, Alderman the hacker?
Yes.
Alderman Zenen Duda?
Yes.
Alderman Kathy Burkin?
Yes.
Got the motion.
So for the public, just to review this one more time, this is for the fiscal year 23 to 2024 and it's based on our expenditures for removal of sludge, which was at a critical level and needed to be done. And going forward, it will be used for the signature.
And we get budgeted in from now on.
Yep.
Alright. Bill number 1003, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2024 and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Do we have a second reading?
I make a motion for adopt bill number 1003.
Do we have a second reading? Motion made, second, roll call.
Bill number 1003, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2024 and appropriating funds pursuant thereto. Um, Alderman Bernard Thompson?
Absolutely.
Alderman Kathy Burkin?
Yes.
Alderman Zenen Duda?
Yes.
Alderman the hacker?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion. That one would be your current budget. Yeah. Alright. Bill number 1004, an ordinance for hearings of no parking within 30 feet of any intersection or signal or signage device on roadway. The ordinance should be in there, complying with state statutes and also include the fire hydrant or statue as well. Instead of this second reading, the city here and there is a complete terrible city, so like we don't have an issue again over here on Ford Street, if that's contained with parking and blocking.
But then 30 feet of the stop sign or fire hydrant.
Yeah. So. You guys can live over that if you have anything, you can discuss that and open that.
I have a little break.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would make a motion to move, proceed with this. The reason for the ordinance is to allow emergency equipment, firefighting equipment to make it through intersections without difficulties created by someone parking at or nearby the intersection.
Alright, Greg the hacker.
Yeah, for the stop sign, we can see it. Alright, so motion.
I make a motion for the reading of bill number 1004, heading only.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, all favor. Alright, any votes?
Okay, bill number 1004, an ordinance for a hearing of a no parking within 30 feet of any intersection, annual signal or signage device on roadway.
Do we have a motion, second reading?
Make a motion for the second reading of bill number 1004, heading only.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, roll call.
Bill number 1003, an ordinance for a hearing of a no parking within 30 feet of any intersection or signal or signage device on roadway.
Roll call.
Alderman the Kathy?
Yes.
Alderman Zenen Duda?
Yes.
Alderman Kathy Burkin?
Yes.
Adoption of the ordinance.
Make a motion to adopt bill number 1004.
Second. Motion made, second, roll call.
Bill number 1003, an ordinance for a hearing of a no parking within 30 feet of any intersection or signal or signage device on roadway.
Do we have a second?
Make a motion for the second reading of bill number 1004.
Second.
Make a motion for the second reading of bill number 1004.
Second.
Motion made, second, roll call.
Bill number 1003, an ordinance for a hearing of a no parking within 30 feet of any intersection or signal or signage device on roadway.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I would make a motion to move, proceed with this. The reason for the ordinance is to allow emergency equipment, firefighting equipment to make it through intersections without difficulties created by someone parking at or nearby the intersection.
Alright, Greg the hacker.
Yeah, for the stop sign, we can see it. Alright, so motion.
I make a motion for the reading of bill number 1004, heading only.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, all favor. Alright, any votes?
Okay, bill number 1004, an ordinance for a hearing of a no parking within 30 feet of any intersection or signal or signage device on roadway. Do we have a second? Make a motion for the second reading of bill number 1004, heading only.
Do we have a second?
Bill number 1004, an ordinance for a hearing of a no parking within 30 feet of any intersection, annual signal or signage device on roadway.
Do we have a motion, second reading?
Make a motion for the second reading of bill number 1004, heading only.
Second. Second, motion made, all favor.
Uh, bill number 1004, an ordinance for a hearing of a no parking within 30 feet of any intersection or signal or signage device on roadway.
Roll call.
Alderman the Kathy?
Yes.
Alderman Zenen Duda?
Yes.
Alderman Kathy Burkin?
Yes.
Adoption of the ordinance.
Make a motion to adopt bill number 1004.
Second. Motion made, second, roll call.
Okay.
Yeah, I would make a motion to move, proceed with this. The reason for the ordinance is to allow emergency equipment, firefighting equipment to make it through intersections without difficulties created by someone parking at or nearby the intersection.
Alright, Greg the hacker.
Yeah, for the stop sign, we can see it. Alright, so motion.
I make a motion for the reading of bill number 1004, heading only.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, all favor. Alright, any votes?
Bill number 1004, an ordinance for a hearing of a no parking within 30 feet of any intersection or signal or signage device on roadway.
Do we have a second?
Make a motion for the second reading of bill number 1004, heading only.
Do we have a second?
Bill number 1004, an ordinance for a hearing of a no parking within 30 feet of any intersection, annual signal or signage device on roadway.
Do we have a second?
Make a motion for the second reading of bill number 1004, heading only.
Do we have a second?
Bill number 1004, an ordinance for a hearing of a no parking within 30 feet of any intersection, annual signal or signage device on roadway.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, all favor. Alright, any votes?
Okay, bill number 1004, an ordinance for a hearing of a no parking within 30 feet of any intersection or signal or signage device on roadway. Do we have a second?
Make a motion for the second reading of bill number 1004, heading only.
Do we have a second?
Bill number 1004, an ordinance for a hearing of a no parking within 30 feet of any intersection, annual signal or signage device on roadway.
Do we have a motion, second reading?
Make a motion for the second reading of bill number 1004, heading only.
Second. Second, motion made, all favor.
Uh, bill number 1004, an ordinance for a hearing of a no parking within 30 feet of any intersection or signal or signage device on roadway.
Roll call.
Alderman the Kathy?
Yes.
Alderman Zenen Duda?
Yes.
Alderman Kathy Burkin?
Yes.
Adoption of the ordinance.
Make a motion to adopt bill number 1004.
Second. Motion made, second, roll call.
Bill number 1004, an ordinance for a hearing of a no parking within 30 feet of any intersection or signal or signage device on roadway.
Roll call.
Alderman the Kathy?
Yes.
Alderman Zenen Duda?
Yes.
Alderman Kathy Burkin?
Yes.
Adoption of the ordinance.
Make a motion to adopt bill number 1004.
Second. Motion made, second.
Alright, make a call.
Any votes? Alright. Next. Uh, the ordinance authorizing mayor on behalf of the city of St. Mary's, under construction, permanent engineering LLC for engineering services. That is just like previous years, whenever.
That's a grant.
I mean, what, engineering grant money?
So we receive a grant?
Yes.
For engineers, so his contract is paid for by the grant?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, all this is acting as that saying, like previously, the signatures or anything, they can enter a contract with Hartland Engineering since that's the ones who scored out and everything. And Toby before and she April's been working with, what's it, Sourcewell?
So they can get.
Sorry, Salesforce, sorry. So they can get the grant, right, because it's a rate bill, so.
It is an 80 grant.
Yes. And we don't have income survey, but once we get that done, which we give everybody's copy and then they're just updated, but after that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright, so bill number 1005.
Make a motion for the reading of bill number 1005, heading only.
First, second.
Second.
Motion made, second, all favor.
Bill number 1005, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of St. Mary, Missouri to enter into a contract with Hartland Engineering LLC for engineering services.
Do we have a motion to?
Make a motion for the second reading of bill number 1005.
Motion made, second, roll call.
Bill number 1005, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of St. Mary, Missouri to enter into a contract with Hartland Engineering LLC for engineering services.
Do we have a motion, adopt?
Make a motion to adopt bill number 1005.
Second. Motion made, second, roll call.
Alderman the Kathy?
Yes.
Alderman Zenen Duda?
Yes.
Bill number 1005, adopted. Alright. Have you looked at engineering joint contract that happened yesterday?
Yes.
Yeah, I did. Yeah.
Alright. There are, this is supplemental reports. There's a man there.
I'm not going to be so.
Andrew, nothing to report, alright. Police Department, Mr. Doc.
Uh, the status of that is we have someone that we're interviewing today, this evening, regarding that and some of the background tracks that we've done, let's look at it, so.
Hi, Dad.
Oh, you said that, okay. Alright, anything else on your side, any complaints, that we haven't been able to leave you?
No, I mean, there's a, it's not really police related, but there's a complaint by one of the citizens about the handling of the debris on the road from ODOT, cutting back some vegetation to improve the line of sight, drive through this new area. And that's not really police related, but it was something that a lot of people would handle that way, since it's a transportation issue. And we, I was a bit ignorant of that as well until it was explained to me that they're helping the city to clear out the size of the roadways as well as cut back some vegetation from the canopy, so that our tractor gets through easily and to clean up the dishes, so we'll have a more speedy flow of water through the city. That's it.
Fire department.
I had six calls this month, one brush fire, two mutual aids, and there were escort medical calls. And the other thing is, is letting everybody know so that October 20th, there's our barbecue, so hope to see everybody there. And it's good food, so. The other thing is, today we did Fire Prevention Week for the head sorb up in St. Jan, that went very well, kids enjoyed it. Been around with the hurricane stuff and all of that, kind of threw me off on my fire prevention stuff, didn't get shipped like it was supposed to, and I think I had stuff left from last year, so it worked out very well on that part, so. Anyways, I'm, but other than that, it's all I got on the fire side.
And there's a meeting tomorrow night?
For the district.
For the district, but we, I already went through the stuff the last time and what happened, so whenever we find out what happened this time, we'll let you guys know what's going on.
Alright, thanks, Becky. Over. The Straits Department. Doctor, do that.
Uh, sorry, you're fine. So, it's kind of in summary, we had some streets done, which are pristine now, I'm in the process of reinforcing the shoulders. Rock, I've already laid down the larger gravel close to me and then feathered out the thinner stuff and addressed the area by the mortar tower next. And hopefully the rock dropped over, related to sites of the roads and other areas as well. Okay, also, yeah, I spoke with Jokers, they're coming back, there's some spots that they didn't finish, called in, it's in a picture, so they will be back. And they also knocked off that percent of the green, so. And then also, there's some citizens that expressed, you know, concerns, they want to have their streets paved as well, and it's kind of repeats what was said last time regarding that issue, that Jokers had reviewed our streets and prioritized the streets that need repaired the most. And as we get funds and opportunity available to do so, then we're going to hit them by their priority levels. And anyone that's interested in that can approach the mayor who has any information pertinent.
Oh, just to touch base with the board, so I did reach out to the county commission several, several times about the 4th Street elevated bridge, like, what was that, 2017, that was created?
Yeah, something like that.
About, it started to dilapitate and crumble apart, you know, same, because we do have a mutual aid agreement with that. And the fact they were coming back down here to put that giant culvert down, St. Mary Church Road, after they already.
Seminario.
No, Seminario, thank you. Chipped and sealed, so they were going to cut that up anyways and overlay it, I just asked them if they did, you know, when they came back, just overlay that to you, since we had that agreement. Kids enjoyed it. Around with the hurricane stuff and all of that kinda threw me off on my fire prevention stuff. Didn't get shipped like it was supposed to and they got half stuff left from last year. So it worked out very well on that part. So anyways, I'm, but other than that, it's all I got on the fire side.
And there's a meeting tomorrow night?
For the district.
For the district.
For the district, but we already went through the stuff the last time and what happened. So whenever we find out what happened this time, we'll let you guys know what's going on.
Street department. Sorry. So it's kind of in summary, we had some streets done which are pristine now. I'm in the process of reinforcing the shoulders. Rock, I've already laid down the larger gravel close to me and then feathered out the thinner stuff. And I addressed the area by the mortar tower next. And we have rock dust over remaining the sides of the roads and other areas as well. Also, yes, but with jokers, they're coming back and there's some spots that they didn't finish. Called in a certain picture. So they will be back. And they also knocked off that percent of the grain. And then also there's some citizens that express, you know, concerns and want to have their streets paved as well. And it's kind of repeats what was said last time regarding that issue. That jokers have reviewed our streets and prioritized the streets that need repaired the most. And as we get funds and opportunity available to do so, then we're going to hit them by their priority levels. And anyone that's interested in that can approach the mayor who has any information pertinent.
Oh, just to touch base with the board. So I did reach out to the county commission several, several times about the 4th Street elevated bridge. Like what was that, 2017 that was created?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, what that, yeah. About it started to dilapitate and crumble apart. You know, same because we do have a mutual aid agreement with that. And the fact they were coming back down here to put that giant culvert down, St. Mary's Church Road after they already.
In cemetery.
No cemetery, oh, thank you. Chipped and sealed, so they were going to cut that up anyways and overlay it. I just asked them if they did, you know, when they came back, just overlay that from T U road since we had that agreement. And pretty much they've been exiled, non-existent. And Mr. Marbury, as the commissioner, and that just nobody is wanting to be very helpful with this at all. I'm just, I can show you the emails because we did our due diligence. I mean, it's an emergency route and it's starting to get real bad now with their chipped seal and everything. Except for that route where it's tied in. So.
And an additional issue, cemetery road itself, road commissioner, road commission had resurfaced the area from near where the bedstone starts all the way past the cemetery. And it was, I'm not an expert in these areas, but it appears to have been done in a substandard way where the substrate that was added was not in the proper ratio with the tack that was put down. The tack that was put down and probably the volume was, the volume ratio was not quite of the standard that it should have been at. As a result of that, much of the gravel that's been laid down, which is a waste of money, has been, has washed off or separated from the road surface. It can now be found in rows and piles up and down the cemetery road. So the commissioner had assured me that he was livid of misspent funds on different public projects in general and how much it upsets them. Yet this was done on our road. And I feel that it was somewhat of a waste of misuse of funds. If they were going to do it, it should have been done properly, at the proper ratio so that the road surface wouldn't have worn off within two months or maybe three at the most if it hadn't been done.
Yeah, so the last correspondence I've received was in reference to what they were calling it. And it's a lot even from mail carriers and stuff like going that way. I don't know if you or his check.
I photographed it most of the days I walked there because I always find new areas. I could run my figure this deep in the little jet inside a little bit washed off.
Which been called?
It's slippery, yeah.
I was just told it will probably be rock loose until next spring. It happens often in these cases where it fell. And they're supposed to have a meeting with me and they never did.
Well, it's not really a failure. I know, you know, on the six page, I would have considered it to be a failure of the job. I would consider it to be improperly done and perhaps a failure from that perspective, but.
That was his words.
Yep. So.
I just want to make it clear if anybody comes with complaints or anything, we had nothing to do with that.
I'm going to say that's not even incidentally.
Well, they did no good seals from our.
Some of it, but mostly cemetery road.
No, it affects, it affects us and people on the town to go through there. And then there was also someone stopped me in the street regarding the cemetery. The weeds being out of control. And I hadn't seen it until after this person mentioned it to me. And we had an employee that was out, they couldn't, they couldn't call it because of medical procedures done. So, but then when I actually looked at it, it didn't look as bad as it was described to me. A lot of it, I guess, some people have misconception that it should look like a golf course. And, you know, being very nearly trimmed, but in the heat, it's not possible to do that. It's not that healthy for a lawn to cut too short. And we just had some rains which resulted in a.
Quick rail.
Quick rail grass.
They will be addressed around Saturday, probably this weekend, so.
Okay.
All right. Moving on. Water wastewater department.
I said we've been hit on water leak. Anyways, I basically put my foot in my mouth and we're around. So we had a pretty good one up on H Street today. It's all fixed now. If we get ready to do a road, we need to find out what road we're doing from jokers or anything like that because what we're going to have to do if we're going to go back in and replace the copper going across the road because it's eating the copper up. It's basically electrolysis, it's pitting the copper. The one we just replaced had a hole about the size of a quarter. So it was, I was surprised that the customer wasn't losing water pressure. I was really surprised about that. So, but we replaced it all the way across the road. So basically what's going to happen, we're going to go from the main all the way into the grass. That way, if we do redo a road, we don't have a problem. We got to cut a brand new road back up.
You mentioned that a couple of times in the other area, it's just a given almost with that. And regarding the copper water supply for it, are there two, at the time it was installed, are there two or three different types? Is there like a, you know, lightweight one and a heavy duty one?
All the copper that was brought in was considered the same ca, copper. And I can tell you what the purity is of it. We're around, each batch is made different, so.
On the street, I'm gonna end up backing into my neighbor. Um, she's still in my water. Um, yeah, when I, well, I have high water bills and stuff, not cool. So that's what I wanted to say. I've been talking to Adam about it and stuff and I'm to the point that it's gonna be no return. If you understand what I'm saying on that, I'm gonna go to jail.
Right.
Well, uh, it's your complaints very, it's very understandable and regarding the theft of water, it's a theft.
It's sealed by statutory limits. It can still be sharper than two years if you miss the mayor.
So we'll take care of that.
Thank you, and I appreciate everything you guys have done for me.
Sure.
And any other questions while you sit there like a man?
No, I'm good.
Yeah.
I come back in three minutes. I'm good. Thank everybody for their help and stuff.
Thank you, guys.
Uh huh.
Alright, who's next? Anybody?
I think I got my answer. I was here regarding the broken grinder on 509 Spruce.
Okay, yeah.
And Frankie said maybe this weekend.
Yeah, I think I spoke with your son. I was up there all the weekend, pumped it down.
Mm-hmm.
And then cleaned out the main forms that day, so. Is it your son?
Uh huh.
Okay, yeah, so we've been trying to get back, even me, down in there, so it just knocked out. So he's on the list and I'm, the lid's gonna be replaced as well. I just didn't get up there today to do it. Cause after that over there.
They got, they got pumped down today.
Okay, well, the lid's broke, so I don't want.
I don't, yeah, it's just sitting there. The lid is just laying there on top and it's broken as well, but it's just.
Okay, they're gonna get a new lid and bolts, so nothing's getting there.
Yeah, that's what Frankie said.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get that addressed for you guys. Is there any other concerns?
Uh, no, I know that cemetery, I mean, I drive by it every day, but the cemetery mowing, I understand.
We've had.
What a situation.
It seems like all once, like you and me, it started with me and then it kind of trickled down the line and it's.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll get that alleviated for you.
Okay.
Get that going.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, you're welcome, thanks.
To fill it out, we'll do.
Thank you.
Alright, anybody else before I marry another presentation?
I think so. Okay. I can only do enough. Yeah. Okay. Do you wanna move to the other end of the table and I'll shoot it off in that wall?
Sure.
I don't mind if I do.
There it is. Do you wanna rub a little bit? I can't tell from that straight. Call it. Call it. Turn the E to B. Oh, yeah. You want me to take a little? He sort of wanted to. Tell her to put this with that paper. Who should that pass out?
She's gonna feel some more shut out. But she was like that. My cop's on.
Anybody need a break or anything?
Okay, if those aren't, if you want to.
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna start.
Whoa.
Now who did?
You get started.
Yeah, it don't work that way. Cause I do red on there.
Yeah, you can't shut that off.
It did everything. It shut it.
Yeah. It kills everything.
She knows that it kills everything.
Oh, I told him.
Oh, did you tell him to do that?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know.
It's up to building, though, it's up to nineteen fifty.
Oh, it is. I didn't show it all, but then.
Take a break.
Let's take, you want to take a break?
Yeah.
How long? If I take a couple minutes?
That's fine.
Alright, alright.
I got all night.
You're gonna have a short.
Budget tonight for the water and sewer department. So I just wanted to explain to you kind of the rate data government. Alright, the methodology that, that we go through, this is a DNR program. So that the rate studies are all done the same way. Uh, this is the wastewater user rate for current rates, so. Um, and it'll be, I think it has five pages to it, so we'll just go through it. So what I did is I took the twenty twenty four fiscal year that just finished in September. And those are the expenses that I listed here. So that that would give you an idea of what your current status was before you passed the new budget. So what I'll do now is put the numbers in from the new budget, so we can look at that. Um, but I just wanna, you know, you always wanna know where you were now, where you were now versus where you need to be. Uh, one thing that you will notice on here is that in this column, which is line twenty one, it says new debt for wastewater treatment plant. There is nothing in that column right now. The line above it is your annual debt service for the debt that you currently have. So this amount, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars is the principal and interest for your series V and C bonds. Plus the debt service reserve, which is fourteen hundred and sixty-four dollars a year. And that is part of the, um, C bonds, um, requirements for the bonds. So, um, I did not add, this is the transfer to your short-lived assets account, nineteen thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. Um, that is your grinder pumps and control panels and things like that.
Never allowed to utilize.
You are allowed to take, yes. And, um, we'll talk about some alternatives for how you manage that money a little bit. Maintenance and supplies, that's that number. Um, so total expenses from the profit loss statement last year for wastewater was a hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars ninety-five cents. Okay, now. This, um, next section is if the city has revenue from other sources. So some towns have a capital improvement sales tax for water and sewer. Um, I did not put your interest income, um, in here, cause I, I know you're gonna be probably spending some of that money down, so I did not do that. Um, I don't think you have any out of the city limits customers. Sometimes folks charge like one and a half times or two times their rate for in-town if you have out-of-town customers. So this is how much we need to come up with based from the user charges. This next section really does not apply to you. This is if you have high-strength, um, industries that discharge high-strength wastewater to you. So that would be a metal finisher, um, a dairy, you know, someone who's doing some sort of processing that puts more of the demand on your wastewater plant than.
When you say highs, excuse me, high-strength, do you mean the water's polluted or?
Well, we're talking wastewater, so it's polluted anyway, but normally, the baseline that you use is the strength of residential wastewater. So typically, that is thought to be three hundred milligrams per liter of biological oxygen demand and three hundred, uh, milligrams per liter of suspended solids. So if they are discharging more solids or more organics that use more oxygen, that means that the rotors at the plant have to run more, you need more capacity to treat more wastewater, whatever. And so you can charge that industry a surcharge based on the strength of their wastewater above that three hundred, three hundred.
Okay.
So, um, I have six million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five as the gallons that you spent or billed for this year. You have a hundred and sixty-seven customers. So, um, that's what we use to calculate how your rates generate the revenue for you. This is that normal domestic VOD and normal domestic suspended solids based on the loading, so. I mean, now I add anything into that industrial. Alright, so. Minimum charge, hundred and sixty-seven customers and you bill twelve months out of the year. So, um, usually, they want to do billing and administration labor insurance, things like that, out of your minimum charge. I did not let the spreadsheet calculate this like this because I'm using your existing rates. Um, so I put the number in based on your existing rates and did not let the software calculate it for me. Now, it's a little bit confusing. So your sewer rate right now is based on three things. Because, um, your minimum charge, um, even if they have no flow up to a thousand gallons is two, twenty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. There's also a surcharge on that of ten dollars and fifty-five cents. So those two numbers added together equals thirty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. The copy that you have has a typo in it, the total annual minimum cost. Because what we do is we take that thirty-seven dollars and forty-one cents, because there is gallons allowed in that minimum, that thousand gallons, your rate per thousand gallons is twelve dollars and seventy-two cents. So you take thirty-seven, forty-one minus twelve, seventy-two, should equal that twenty-four, sixty-nine. So then we take twenty-four, sixty-nine times twelve months, times a hundred and sixty-seven people. Now this is your rate that you charge. That's not right. Ten twenty-three. This should be twelve seventy-two. Okay. I was running scenarios and something that changed. Okay, so twelve seventy-two per thousand gallons. Normally, your customers do want to use five thousand gallons. So your existing rates for three thousand gallons of flow is the twenty-four, sixty-nine plus three thousand divided by a thousand times twelve, seventy-two is sixty-two, eighty-five a month total. So. This is for the high-strength. So this, are rates sufficient is the next category that we wanna look at, should be on the last page. So the minimum charge generates forty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. Your volume charge of twelve dollars and seventy-two cents by the amount of gallons that you charge yields seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars fifty-three cents. So your annual revenue total, one twenty-nine, four sixty, one twenty-nine. So you have a budget surplus in sewer of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. And I'll give this copy to April. So we can distribute it to all of you. So that is the good news. Your sewer plant is doing okay. Alright?
But for water, we have a deficit, right?
Yes. So let me pull that one up. So. I did not pull that out. Um. Again, these rates, this is from the twenty twenty-four profit loss statement at the end of September. So that's where I got these, um, amounts for expenses. Replacement costs, I did not put anything in here. You do have a short, um, short-lived repair or our reserve account um, requirement for deposit of eleven thousand, four dollars a year. That's the nine hundred and seventeen dollars a month. Um, the reserve of twenty-eight, fifty-six, I think that account was, um, created, um, in September, at the end of the fiscal year. So, and then the principal and interest from your series A bonds. So the, part of the reason, um, water, you have more expenses in water. The debt is higher and you pay for water. So you have to pay for the wholesale costs of the water. So that total for purchased water for this past year was fifty-eight thousand, one thirty-nine oh one. Is that right, April, summer? I know you haven't gotten the bill for September yet. So there'll be a little bit more than that, um, when we look at that. So total expenses, a hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars ninety cents. There is no high-strength drinking water. We want it as clean as we can get it. So again, same number of gallons per year, twelve months, a hundred and sixty-seven customers. So the drinking water does a calculation that's a little bit different. It calculates based on the amount of water you bill for, divided by the number of billing periods of customers. So your average customer's use per month is three thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight gallons. That's about what I see everywhere, is right around that three thousand to thirty-five hundred range. You know, as the washing machines use less water, toilets use less water, showerheads use less water. You know, it used to be it was five thousand gallons, but because of the water efficiency stuff, it, it's going down. The problem with that is the rate per gallon goes up, cause you still have the cost that you have to go. Okay, so. Again, I did the same thing, um, I think you charged thirteen ninety-six per thousand gallons, is that right?
Correct.
It's, um, if you subtract out the seventeen thirty. No, that's the gallon charge, seventeen thirty-nine is the minimum. So you add seventeen thirty-nine plus thirteen ninety-six to get your first thousand gallons.
Thirty-five, one thirty-six.
Yeah. So that generated the three thousand gallon bill would be fifty-nine, twenty-seven, is that right? Well, for the water, if you fill up to a thousand gallons, it's like fifteen hundred and one. If you don't go over that thousand dollar. Okay. For the water, it's a little. So total annual revenue of hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars for two cents um, from the last budget year, which is a deficit of twenty-two thousand, two fifty-seven, seventy-seven.
And what's the, to eliminate the deficit, what's a break-even point, uh, for, uh, users? We need to be at like one eighty or two hundred or?
Well, I, I did a break-even, um, scenario just to see what that might look like. And you can see how easy it is to try different things, um, just by changing some of the numbers, so, um.
But the, I guess it would be the users from, users, number of users. Like we're at one sixty-seven, so if we, what do we need to go up to in terms of our user population?
The number of connections.
User base, the number of connections to break even. Do we need like fifteen more homes?
Do we need what?
Fifteen more homes, uh.
Oh.
Users, you know?
I did not look at it from that direction. Um, I can, but I have to think about how to get this.
Cause they were never discussing, like, one of the ways out of this is to grow the town.
Right.
But you can't grow the town if, uh, it's uncomfortable to live here because of the expenses for water and sewer, et cetera, and other reasons. So, uh, so if you added, so we're thinking of getting a list of habitable real estate properties to, uh, develop. Usually, Chamber of Congress should be doing stuff like that, but I, they've never been represented here formally that I know of. Uh, and that's typically the job, but I think it's incumbent on the city to do that itself anyway. You know, to promote the city, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, so, so what I would like to know is, how many do we need to break even? They have inputs, information to.
What did I do here? Did I change something?
As long as they're not talking about it much. We lost twelve point four eight percent senses after tornado. So I think that'd be a connection if we were to buy them and then lost them.
Well, one of them is bigger, cause it's the, I don't know, I'm a tiny mall, that was a two-inch, was that?
This was, they lost even like leaks and stuff too.
For that kind of.
I mean.
Yeah, so, um, with the leaks, um, that's built in. Because you have to pay that amount to the water district, whether it's called, um, water loss or non-revenue water. Okay, so. Yep. We're short. Oh, and one thing I did do when I did the expenses is I left the expenses charged to the collector in the budget. So, um, I don't know, since you don't have a collector, I think they probably need to be called something else, but those expenses are still in here. Okay, um, at the current rate that shows the twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollar deficit, you would need three hundred and seventy-six new customers.
Three hundred and seventy-six new customers?
Mm-hmm.
Connections? This would be a double the population?
Mm-hmm.
Right, well, we had, like, like Annette said, you know.
Additional, not plural, additional.
We had two, two-inch, three-inch.
They have one.
Plus, so it's one sixty-seven plus three seventy-six, two-inch, yeah.
Holy cow.
And they use kind of a bit more.
Yeah, well, we lost antique malls.
And the other thing, the others, you're the devil's one, you're saving one.
Oh, my gosh.
Because once a month, they're building tanks. Yeah.
Your ideal customer, if you're looking for new customers, your ideal customer is someone who uses a lot of water and very little sewer. So you want an industry that their product, whatever it is they make, the water leaves out their back loading gun in their product. Um, so, you know, concrete, um, we had a, um, concrete burial hall place in town. Their, the water went into the concrete and so, um, their sewer use was less than their water use. We had a medical, uh, goods facility that made those squishy hot and cold gel pack things. And, um, so a lot of their water went out the door. So that wasn't as much of a bit on our wastewater plant. We had a, um, Walmart distribution center that had an awning cooling system, it was all refrigerated inside all the produce and what happened. So their refrigeration system was water-cooled and so, you know, keep it a tight school. And so they, a lot of that water evaporated, about forty-five percent of the water that they ran through their cooling system evaporated. So, um, you know, those are the kind of customers, because your water or your wastewater plant has an issue, that's the kind of customer we need, is someone who uses water, but not a lot of sewer.
Then the surplus on the sewer part, who's that?
Is the only thing keeping them flowing.
They said they lost like this length of this float.
Yeah.
And we lost like antique mall and, and they said they had two meters, two-inch and then a great many. And then one was at a place, they went, and they filled a bunch of tanks.
Seven years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been. Seven years and that was the way you deal with a loss.
Yeah, that, that's two-inch too.
Mm-hmm.
It's really cold in it, salt water, uses a lot of explosives.
Okay.
That's alright.
Yeah.
I had never, I had never been asked that question before, cause I just had to do math.
Yeah.
Um, so what I did was, just to see what it would take, it would be your current number of customers, the minimum charge would go up five dollars. And the user charge would go up two dollars. So six and five, eleven dollars a month for, you know, um, yeah, eleven dollars a month.
And each, for each one, each of the one hundred and sixty-seven?
Mm-hmm.
And they lost that sense. Well, I mean, I don't get it, like, wait. Eleven, you know, eleven dollars is eleven dollars, but it's, you know, the water bill's kind of pricey as it is, but to me, the math doesn't sound right for only eleven dollars to be eliminated with the addition of three hundred and sixty-seven more users, you know? It's, cause three sixty-seven times eleven is gonna be, what, thirty-seven grand or?
I know, I didn't know, you know? My brain is not as smooth as it used to be.
My brain is almost as young as it used to be. 375 a year, our 31 customers.
31.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's, we're due a.
Sorry. Sorry, I'm better than that.
I'm like, oh.
You don't have no brain in this town, but I think.
Right, we're gonna have to go by the ground. And we're trying to bargain it and stuff.
I forgot, they get billed up every month.
Bet.
I have worked it out these days. I can't write in my head anymore.
No, you don't. I know. I feel your pain.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, 31. But, um, we need to be careful that the budget for water and sewer, because it's a combined utility, um, is not a negative budget. The city cannot pass a negative budget. So.
So our recent expenses of the budget, I mean, we got, the water's negative, but the sewer's positive, so they kind of cancel each other out. And the sewer also, those figures you have include the amount that we get to spend for sludge removal.
Yeah, because that came out of the city and the stuff that the profit loss.
Oh, but we still have to factor that in as an expense for sewer recovery. And did you?
No, I didn't. This is only based on the expenses from last year that run profit loss.
So if we factor in future use of sludge removal and stuff, it's gonna eliminate, it's gonna reduce our profit further in that area. Okay, then.
We'll check it out after any. How much did you calculate for revenue? Uh-huh. How much did you budget revenue for the sewer, water and sewer?
So water, 155, 200 for water and for the sewer, 115 and 75.
How much?
115, 175 for the sewer and 155, 200 for the water. So the seats, 155, you want to see the expenses?
No, I'm, I just, so. We have to be able to demonstrate that the revenues that we budgeted are possible with whatever rates you decide to have.
And you're also, I gather, saying that in order for us to be compliant, we need to raise our water.
Probably.
By a little dollars.
Either that or cut something, yeah. And I'm not sure, looking at your budget, I think it's pretty smart enough.
Is there an area where it could be, is there a weak spot?
No.
Can you shrink a little bit or? Water user rate, vehicle expenses, except for for guys driving around to pick stuff.
Yes.
Yeah. What's operations labor? Is you guys running around to pick stuff up? Insurance, what's that?
Insurance.
Yes, work comp, vehicle insurance, marine insurance, um, public health insurance.
Property insurance, property insurance.
Property, did you say health insurance?
No, health insurance is, um.
Property insurance.
What's marine insurance? I don't know if there's some marines.
It's only a hundred dollars. But still, if you don't know what it is, then rather track down.
Okay, and then, I guess, is there?
Property insurance.
Can we shop that to get our rates down?
Are you a law firm now?
Is that about the least expensive or?
I don't know.
Probably, I think we have to shop everything, you know, to trim any waste. I mean, every, we just gotta pour over every expenditure and make sure that we're not spending a lot on, except for the paintball colors.
It's gotta be it.
Okay.
And so you're good for now.
Thank you.
Um, April can, you know, write checks and whatever because you're not overspending your budget. Because, you know, you just started this one year.
Yeah.
But we will need to do something soon, so you have a whole year's worth of rate increase, you know?
Right, and our debt reserves pretty much are hit too, correct?
Your debt reserve?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, yes, okay.
That's one of those that you're just.
Stuffing.
And I don't, I don't know, um, the USDA bonds, two of them, one of them I know is at 4%. You know, I don't, usually, SRF will not let you pay off USDA debt, but then SRF, SRF rates 2%. So, um, and I don't know what you can do with your debt.
Yeah, I mean, I just logically, number one, reduce every unnecessary expense, you know? And to review every line item to make sure that we are absolutely paying the least amount. Number two, generate more income, you know, and, uh, that can be done. I guess with a rate increase, but there has to be, you know, some other volatility that we can, uh, do that work. And then what about, you know, other departments? If we have, uh, an area where there's some, I mean, we need to hit every single department and make sure that you're not wasting anything anywhere. Right, and then, and the money that we have, sorry to interrupt, and the money that we have or gaining interest or something, can we renegotiate that to get a higher rate, you know, or to? Are municipalities obligated to go the CD route only or do they do?
Um, in fact, uh, one of the gals came down and sat with April and she made the recommendation that the city put, um, your short-lived asset amounts into money market.
Yeah.
Because those earn more interest.
11%.
I didn't say anything about that.
She and I talked after she was down here, because I was asking her how, you know, I was surprised to see that you guys had so much of your, um.
Yeah, like Vanguard. Yeah, Vanguard, you know, it's 11% or something like that, depending on which fund you take.
Well, that's, that's not an insured account though, right? Um, you would want a money market at the bank that, you know, you only get interest, you don't ever, there's no risk. Um, so, um, she said the city that she just came from, they were at a 24%. Usually, you can only take, uh, write three checks out of the account per month. So, you know, if you needed a bike rider, you could write a check for that out of that account. Um, but that's probably, and I don't know what your CDs are making either.
Yeah, because that's.
We certainly wouldn't pay a penalty if you spent a lot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I have to profess my ignorance in that, but I would say, you know, my inclination would be to contact like Vanguard and Fidelity and Morgan Stanley or something and ask if they have municipal bonds or something or yield.
I think you need to have, somebody needs to call in the mail and make sure that that's an eligible place to invest the city's money.
Okay.
I've never heard of anyone investing with any of those.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, because you can take, you know, the same 11%, you know, a while back, it was, you know, way lower, you know, than that.
Yeah, I had some money at a money market account that actually went negative.
Yeah.
So, you know, it, um, that's not what you're hoping.
Yeah, of course, okay. Thank you for all your hard work, yes.
Well, we're not done yet, but I just kind of wanted to show you guys the methodology and kind of give you a feel for the fact that you are negative in water, but it is better news in sewer and, you know.
Right. Okay, so, yeah, I mean.
I will say that I had trouble tracking expenses from profit and loss statement to put into this spreadsheet. Just trying to figure out what matched with what, so, um.
Is that because of, you know, like on my notebooks from my office, things would get misassigned to a bracket, you know? And, uh, show at the end of the year in summaries.
It.
We just get dumped into, you know, like, uh, travel expense when it was something else, you know?
Yeah, and, um, I am not equipped for this, well, I guess, but, um, it seemed to me like there were accounts that had like a .1, .2, .3, um, some that saw the account, you know? Um, and there were some, uh, just, the logic part of my brain was not tracking that because it's not the kind of accounting I was doing, so.
Hey, I was, I already think. Income survey is next, right? Income survey is next.
Yes.
On the, when you mentioned 80/20 on the grant, so that 20 is gonna come out of our budget. Do we have that in there already?
2,500 will come out of your budget.
That's spread to your, what do you think?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
Depending on how fast they get it done.
Yeah.
Um, so you will pay 20% of each invoice from the engineering company is how it works.
And they have standards, no other way around it, right, just until we complete our concept. So it's incumbent on us to get this done, to get this done.
And the reason that it is so important that people terminate income survey is that in 2025 and 2026, DNR has bipartisan infrastructure law money that has been given to them by EPA to, um, for disadvantaged communities, 40% of funds from like EPA and several other agencies have to be used in disadvantaged communities. So if your income is at a certain level, and we already see that the rates are high, then this year, had you applied by March 1st of this year, that grant for the actual capital expense for upgrading the wastewater plant would have been a 60% grant, 40% advantage from the city. Plus, you know, CCG kicks in some money and, and they have a grant for rent as well. So, um, that would be up to $200, I think. So we want to, we want to get your engineering study done in time and the, um, income survey done in time so that you're eligible for the most amount of grant funding you can get. Um, and it's, we need to explain that to your customers.
Okay, so, uh, the only benefits of everybody in the long run, really.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I mean, sure, I mean, really, it's a no-brainer. Yeah, it's a no-brainer, so. And we only have to have, what, 80% or 100% sentences? We have to have 100%?
No, not to survey 100% of your customer, but we only need to get 80% of that number back. 80%, 80% of 167.
Okay, all right.
So typically, when you do these kind of income surveys, higher income folks turn them in, sometimes. But the people at the very low part of the income scale frequently don't. So we need to make sure as you do that survey that they turn those in. So when you guys get ready to start doing that, um, we need to send a list of all your account numbers and, um, addresses to the state, to the, you know, and they'll spread the list and say, okay, these are the ones that you need to send the survey to. Before you, so.
A little decipher there.
Make sure there's no duplicates, no commercial facilities, that kind of stuff, because that's a residential survey.
And you've provided April with the, uh, updates in the form of.
Yeah.
I, so, yeah. So our target is to have that done within a month, you know, to be out, you know, because this is important because it's gonna affect that 20% then, right?
No, it won't have an impact for 20% for, no.
Not on this one. Because we're eligible, because it shows we make, what, 80,000 an average a year.
Oh, I don't remember.
It's high, whatever's high is the high.
Okay.
But, yeah.
But it will, it will help us in the long run, future and see community development block grant and everything else.
Yeah, the income survey is fit for 12, for four years.
That's good, yeah, all right.
Any other questions?
I don't have any. You guys have any?
Thank you.
Thanks for driving down from Iowa or, yeah. I'm not even gonna ask how fast you're on.
I get in lost because it's a company vehicle, I get in trouble if I get a speeding ticket.
Oh, is it? It may get tires.
So. I even took two potty rigs and bought gas, so it wasn't too bad. I was, I was worried about San Carlos, all that construction.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I came across on, on 36, I didn't go 70.
Did you have, did you have arrangements?
No, I've got, I'm gonna drive top of bluff tonight, I need to be in Morehouse in the morning.
Oh, so Morehouse, yeah. Well, thank you for having me down for this, and we'll just keep chipping away.
So April, what I'd like to do is, um, maybe let me know when would be a good, not as busy day for you. If you and I can sit down and do this, so you can be my double checker and maybe help me understand the expenses better on your budget.
Cool, all right. All right, so motion there.
I'm gonna motion, he closes the.
Second. Motion made second, on favor. And now you're going to 12 seconds? Yeah. Great.